We'll call this work session to order. Al, roll call please.
And this is roll call for the work session of March 22nd. Benson.
Benson, here.
Benson is present. Brunick.
Brunick, here.
Brunick is present. No response from Sarda. No response from Mybaum. Moser.
Moser, here.
Moser's present. Shram.
Shram, here.
Shram is present. Mayor Johnson.
Johnson, here.
Mayor Johnson is present. City Manager Leon. City Manager Leon is present. City Attorney Denherter.
Denherter is here.
City Attorney Denherter is present.
All right, there's no one in the audience tonight for public appearances, so I will turn it over to the city manager. And tonight's topic of discussion is once again, the legalization of medical marijuana.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission. We also have with us on our go-to, Bill Aftin, our consultant who's helping us with our walking us through this journey of medical cannabis. And we also have some members of our team, Dave Mingo, Lisa Yardley, and of course, Ross Denherter is here in the room. And we have Todd Brandt here from the police department, and Al Verrick, who are part of that team. I have, I did hear back from Commissioner Weber and Commissioner Minor, they won't be available this evening, so they, they won't be here for either our work session or our regular meeting. And I'll work with all four of our commissioners who aren't here right now, and talk through some of these topics. So, for the purpose of tonight's meeting, I'd like you to try to, the best you can, separate the concepts of recreational and medical cannabis. Tonight, we're just talking about recreational, or excuse me, we're just talking about medical cannabis this evening. We don't know the status or future of recreational at this point. It's probably impossible to entirely separate the two, mostly because the two topics kind of bleed into one another. And I think doing a good job at setting up our medical marijuana policies and guidelines will help us do a good job if we get to the point of setting up recreational. But for these purposes, we're talking just about medical this evening. Of course, because it's a work session, we're not going to vote on anything, and we're not going to decide anything. In fact, you don't even have to have complete consensus tonight on the things that we're going to run past you. We need just enough discussion and guidance from you that we are on the right path, or we're not on the right path, when it comes to medical cannabis, so that we can move forward with writing ordinance for you to look at, to debate, and discuss going into the next couple of months. We were told today, at the first-class mayor's meeting, Mayor Johnson and I attended that meeting, that there still may be a special session on medical cannabis in May. That's all that the league knows. Either way, regardless of whether that occurs or not, the league intends to put some guidance out. They feel a little pressure, I think, but do think we have a lot of time. I think there, we should be a little more urgent, in the sense that I think we need to be able to explain to people who start inquiring about how this will occur in our community. I think we need to be ready to be able to provide them with the basics. And I think the July 1 date is probably pretty likely at this point. So, I'd like to be as ready as we can be, as near to that date as possible. That said, because we're operating a little bit ahead here, from what we for sure know will be the outcomes and policies of the state, or any joint, a special session that occurs, we may have to come back and revisit some of these questions, or some of these concepts. But to the best of our ability, we use IM-26 to guide sort of the format here this evening, and some of the things we'd like you to talk about. So, just so you know, sort of what our intentional timeline would be, is that I would like to get enough input from you, so that Ross can work with the various department heads to draft an ordinance that we can bring back to a work session on April 26th. And then, what we could do at that point is make changes at that time, and have a first reading then, the following meeting, which would be May 10th. And if we're ready, a second reading, public hearing on May 24th, would allow us plenty of time for publication, if we need to be ready by the 1st of July. And that could be slowed down, of course, if we need to, or decide we want to make some changes. So, we're going to talk about a couple of things this evening, and get as far as we can. We may not get all the way through the memo that we created, but we'd like to try to, if we can. There's a couple of things that we would like to get your feedback on. The first being, the number of medical cannabis establishments that we would like, you would like, to be licensed within city limits. So, we'll talk a little bit about that. Operational hours of medical cannabis establishments. Dimensional criteria for medical cannabis establishments. So, the thought that's being passed around the state, is that these medical cannabis facilities may want to be regulated by zoning district. That is certainly an option that would be available to you all, to zone for, for them. Our team has talked about this a lot, and we had what I think is a good idea, and I think Ross believes is a good idea as well. And that is to license, set up the criteria for them, the same way we do when we license, like our sexually-oriented businesses or dance halls. So, it's not a nature of necessarily, the zoning district that they're in, but that they're required, but because of the dimensional criteria that we put into that license, they can only be located in so many spots. The reason not to do it via zoning is, is a couple-fold. One, a lot of times when you have zoning questions, you, you end up having variances, or maybe conditional use permits. Not only is, are those laborious processes, and have sometimes a history of becoming highly political, but also, those things can change from planning and zoning commission to planning and zoning commission. So, what one planning and zoning commission might think is a good requirement, or criteria for a zoning district, or special use, conditional use, another, you know, a year later, might not think that. Same with commissions, you know, commissions change, and commissioners change. Keeping it attached to the license, and the criteria in the license, keeps that a level playing field. So, our vantage point was, let's do it one time, the right time, the first time, and not then continue to, to make tweaks and changes. Also, we try to be committed to being seamless, and a little bit more efficient. You all know that any zoning change, or zoning conditional use permit, those things can take a number of weeks or months, and then if there's any problem, it can take a number more weeks or months. And we just don't feel that's necessary. We feel that we are now getting closer and closer to being experts in this area, and licensing experts. And I think that if the commission sets up a good criteria, staff can administratively license these types of facilities. Also, the state would have the fall, the final say as to who gets a license, so it isn't just up to us anyway. So, I think that this is a really good way to put this forward. When we talked about this with other cities, they were very interested. I think no one just had thought about it yet. So, I think we'll see a mix in how that's done. The county, for example, we have, Ross and I have spoken with one of our county commissioners. We had a meeting with them on Friday, with her on Friday evening. May end up doing it zoning-wise, that might make sense in a more rural setting. But for us, we think the dimensional criteria is the way to go. And we'll talk a little bit about that as we go along here. The next item we would like some input on from you, is establishing that fee for the establishments. So, we can set a license fee that's reasonable. And so, when we were talking as a group, I said, "Well, Ross, you know, $100,000 is totally reasonable," right? And he said, "No, we have to go by a legal interpretation of reasonability, and so, we can't price that outside of what it would really cost us to administer the license." So, when we get into that, we'll talk about that a little bit more. But I understand that, that that's not going to be, the creation of a license, or awarding a license, authorizing a license, isn't going to be a big revenue maker for us, it doesn't appear. Also, we want to talk in that ordinance about security measures for medical cannabis establishments. So, that's going to be a big portion of that ordinance, what we require to be the security measures. Because of the contacts that Bill has, we were able today, as a team, to sit down and talk to an operator, who has developed these, these types of establishments in Colorado, but is now working in Missouri, which is a little bit more of a rural setting, to set these up under their criteria, and under their medical requirements. So, we have an inside connection now with somebody who we can bounce questions off of. And they walked us through a lot of the security measures. And so, Todd Brandt is working closely on that side, and will help with Ross on establishing that kind of criteria in our ordinance. So, another thing that we will do, is establish the criteria for the background checks on the medical cannabis licensed applicants. Again, Commander Brandt will be leading that for us, but that will be considered as part of our, in part of our licensing fee, or I would encourage you to consider that in part of the licensing fee. Mostly because it takes, you know, a lot of staff time to go through that in-depth of a, of a background process, which we certainly will want to have occur with anybody that puts forth an application. Also, we want to, in this ordinance, establish a criteria for how you select license. So, initially, I thought, well, you know, first come, first served. That's not probably the way we should do that. Because, you know, meeting the criteria should not be the only consideration, I don't think. So, we want to talk about how you decide, if you limit it to two, or three, or one, how you decide that. Maybe you want to have some baseline criteria, which is what we'll propose, and then it's a lottery, or baseline criteria, and you, you know, look into something additional. We'll talk about that here, too, as we go along. Establishing building and signage design criteria, we have to be a little careful there. Ross is warning us on, on how far we go with that. But we certainly want these places to look like what they're intended to be. Professional buildings, where people can acquire a product that will help them medically. So, so, we don't want it to look like, you know, an unattractive place, or undesirable place, because that's not what it's intended to be. So, we want, we don't want to detract from our current business community. We want it to be complimentary to what we have currently going on in our, in our business locations. So, with that, I'd like to start talking to you, and hear from you, about the number of licenses, if you've put any, to any thought into that, in terms of medical establishments that you would like to consider in city limits. You do have to have at least one, that is in the IM-26. You don't have to set a limit, but we really recommend that you do set a limit. And you can establish a limit, and change that by your ordinance, too. So, of course, if you decide, you know, further on, that you set the limit at one or two, and you think the city could use five or six, you could go back and change that. We are really strongly suggesting, our team, is that we, we limit that number to be rather low. Mr. Aftin has encouraged and learned from Colorado cities, that our size of community, two or three seems to be about where cities tend to be. In speaking with the police department, they're suggesting that two is about where they think for security and, and safety of these types of establishments, and the clientele, or customers, or patients, I guess is what we're going to call them, for that safety, that we don't have, you know, we don't license a lot of them. You can see in your, in your packet there, I put a couple of different examples of cities in Colorado, and Montana, and the number of medical dispensaries they have. In a few states, Minnesota, North Dakota, and Texas, those appear to be regulated more closely by the state itself. So, Minnesota, I was exact, I was surprised, actually, there's only a few in the state, and they're spaced out geographically. And I'm not sure if the legislature, legislator at one ti, legislature at one time in Minnesota determined that, that there'll be this many in this region, this many in that region. But there's not very many in Minnesota. So, you know, keeping that in mind, you know, if recreational occurs, we probably would end up having more than, more dispensaries. But in just talking about medical, I think we need to think about what's reasonable in terms of folks that will have those cards, which they will need to have to get product. So, that's kind of the first order of discussion, if anyone has comments or questions on that.
Oh, I was going to ask, in being naive in this whole process, so, are you saying, even though we're just talking medical marijuana tonight, that if recreational goes through, those are not the same dispensaries? You would have to have, there wouldn't be a business that does medical and recreational? We'd have to have completely separate businesses?
Unknown right now. So, some states, they have hybrid, and, and they've started as medical, and then the state allows you to do medical and recreational. Some keep it entirely separate. What the markets tends, from what we've learned from Mr. Aftin, what the market tends to happen, that in states where you end up having recreational, fewer medical ones end up existing. So, I don't know what, what conclusion you want to draw from that. But, but I think that, you know, just because you're saying, if you end up guiding us towards a low number, one or two medical establishments, that doesn't mean that you're saying that's the total number of establishments for, for both. It'll be a, at least a separate licensing process to begin with, or we'll have an opportunity to meld the licensing process and change it.
So, in any states, do you see hybrids of traditional pharmacies with medical marijuana dispensaries? Are those kept separate?
I have not seen that, because my understanding is that a traditional, you know, pharmacy, like Walgreens, or Hy-Vee, or if you're in a clinic, they have to go by federal standards. And so, they, because it's not federally accepted, they, they don't, they don't conclude the two. So, you won't go, you know, get your high blood pressure medicine, and then you have somebody next to you picking up your marijuana medicine, or whatever they call it. So, so, to my understanding, that does not occur. In the future, if the federal requirements change, that, that could occur.
I mean, I think for the sake of competition, that at least two, but I, I mean, or three, but two seems fine. Encouraging, one, one by itself, I think, would not necessarily be good for the market, generally. So, two would be fine, in my opinion.
And certainly, once we draft a language, you know, if some of you would feel strongly, and we don't have some commissioners present tonight, some of you maybe think three's the right number, some of you might think two, that can all be debated out, or, you know, discussed individually amongst you, between some of these staffs. We're, our hope tonight is, like, just to introduce and get that kind of, exactly this kind of feedback.
Just a thought to leave you with on this issue, too. We can always add, but it's a virtual impossibility to take them back, unless, you know, we, we had reduced the number, and then one eventually went out of business. So, bear that in mind when you're setting the number. But it is also possible, what our consultants' experience has been, when there have been states in which you start with medical, and then add the recreational, many of the established medical dispensaries will fill out the application paperwork, and they will convert into a recreational. So, I don't know how that plays into your, your setting of the number, but just food for thought.
I, I, I am agreeing right now with, with Mason on, on the two. Also, due to the fact that we're required to have one. So, if you have someone who is not, is, is not meeting the regulations, well, if, if you were to, would that put us in a, in a bind, as far as, if you didn't have, if you didn't have an additional one, and someone was being a bad player, and you were having to close them down? I could see a sticky situation there.
Well, you're not required to have one. What the regulation says is, you can't tell somebody who otherwise meets the requirements that they can't have one, if there isn't one already there. So, basically, you can't tell the only player in town, "No," if they're otherwise willing to meet the standards. But we also can't make regulations that are so burdensome, that it's unreasonable for anybody who's trying to get into the business. Meaning, setting a, like, setting a fee that would be, you know, cost prohibitive for anybody to jump in the market, or set a design criteria that says, "Your dispensary can only be in the, the 15th floor of a tower," you know what I mean? By trying to regulate from an impractical standpoint. But, does that make sense, Ben?
Yeah, that, that certainly makes sense. I'm just concerned with, with the number. And, and how many is, is a good place to start?
It sounds like, from what we're hearing so far, you, you all, you, you're thinking about a low number, and setting a low number. Where that number exactly lands might be, might be debated, but you're liking the lower number.
Yes, and especially if our police department is stating that, you know, they feel most comfortable with a lower number as well. But I am, you know, I also agree that there needs to be at least two.
So, my understanding, the way we're structuring this, is so that we won't end up like a situation like we have with alcohol licenses, right? Where we're creating an artificial market, where these are being traded for hundreds of thousands of dollars, potentially?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I think setting a limit is a good idea, for, for that and other reasons. Now, that will be a broader philosophical discussion, I think, if we get to the point of a recreational license. So, how much time do you guys have tonight? But that will be a broader discussion, and a, and a larger discussion, if we get to, if and when we get to that point.
Mayor Johnson, the, the discussions with the municipal league have been helpful, in that they are communicating with the different departments that are going to be regulating this at the state level. And the, the general understanding among the departments is, the licensure structure will intentionally be set up in a way that those licenses will not be transferable. They do not want to make an economy out of holding those licenses, in the same way that we have liquor licenses, and video lottery licenses that are bought and sold.
If we get to a point, though, where we're setting a number for, if we're setting a number for recreational, that'll be a broader discussion, I think. Just because if there's a limited number, and the number's more, less than the demand?
And I have another question. Whether we do one, or two, or even three, they communicate, right? So, that's not like it's a problem that somebody can go into one medicinal shop, buy what they legally can, and then turn around and go into the other one, right? Do they, do they have like a database, or something, that they track all of this?
They do. And we, we talked about that today as well. So, you can't go in for your back medicine at, you know, I don't know, Prairie Grass Outfitters, and then go in to get your same prescription, just like you couldn't, if you had a, you know, an antibiotic, you couldn't fill it at five different prescri, you know, pharmacies. So, my understanding is, they are very, run very professionally that way. If they're not doing that, that would be a reason for, you know, pulling their, shutting them down, or pulling their license.
Before we move on, I just want to note to your comment about, how much time do we have tonight? That's why I'm glad that we are tackling this so early, so we have, we're not under the gun to make decisions. We can figure this stuff out in a methodical manner. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, and you know, you guys have, your, you commissioners have the memo, so if we don't get through all the discussion points tonight, just your feedback will help us get that ordinance going, and, and we can talk about it, you know, and if you wanted to, our next work session, plan more time, we could certainly do that as well. The hours of operation is another item for you to think about, and talk about here with us tonight. There's a lot more all over the board. Some places had 24-hour medical, some had limited hours. I gave you some bullet points. Some are open only sort of nine to five, or 10 to four. Some are closed on Mondays, and open the rest of the days of the week. You know, I'm trying to look at this as another sort of way of approaching health. And so, like, I feel like, maybe you look at it the way you look at, you know, other businesses, what's convenient for the customer, you know, and what's reasonable. So, we don't have a 24-hour pharmacy right now in town that I'm aware of. My understanding, and I think is the closest one, is maybe Sioux City, or Sioux Falls, for a 24-hour pharmacy. I don't think a 24-hour pharmacy is necessary, it doesn't, I don't, my understanding, our understanding is, it doesn't, there's not an, you know, emergent situation where you would use, where you would use medical cannabis, in most cases. So, I mean, I think having flexible hours, and maybe looking at what our local pharmacies are now. I think our pharmacies are open on Sundays, the limited hours. I think they do have some evening hours, but they're not, you know, 24-hour, or 2:00 AM, or anything like that. So, to me, that's what's reasonable, but we want to do what's reasonable for you.
Is, okay. I was just going to say, is there a reason to put a limitation on the hours? I can understand if it was recreational, but is there really a reason to control it? Do they, do ever, does everyone do it that way?
Well, a lot of people control it. I think, I think there is a concern that some people that will get a medical marijuana card, might be, might not necessarily have a, a real medical reason. I think also, there's a fear, or a, I don't want to, I don't really like to use the word fear, but there's a concern, too, that folks utilizing the facility for legitimate reasons may have encounters with people who are there for not legitimate reasons, and to keep those clients safe. Most that I've seen are not 24-hours. The only 24-hour ones I've seen have been big urban areas. So, most of the ones I've seen is like a, an 8:00 PM, or 9:00 PM latest closure. But I, I don't know, Bill, if you want to add something to that, or maybe Todd, you would like to add something to that, but my understanding is, was people just don't feel it necessary, really, for safety reasons, and for the reasons that sometimes people, like, I guess, any product, will misuse it.
Well, I think in, in Colorado, most of them are closing by nine or 10. In Frisco, Colorado, when we first went to recreational, we tried to have earlier hours for them to close, and I think we came up with like 6 o'clock. And within three months, we had to change it to 8 or 9 o'clock, because people have different shifts of work, and it, and I, and it kind of works with people's life schedules. The other reason I, I wouldn't recommend going much later than 8 or 9, is I think your law enforcement, it, it helps them knowing that at a certain time, the dispensaries will close, because then they got to concentrate on the bars closing. So, it doesn't spread your law enforcement out too thin, either.
I would agree with what Bill has to say, and that's the standpoint of it, at night. These, especially in our area, where we're just learning how to, I guess, deal with this, is that we have to make sure that what we're doing is protecting people when they come there. And then, in the nighttime hours, if people are going there for truly medicinal purposes and leaving, there's very strict guidelines on no loitering in their parking lots, but still, that doesn't prevent the potential of the black market that's occurring within the block area there, too, and potentially setting up shops. So, as far as safety and security of customers, we want to make sure that everybody's safe and secure in our city, so.
And I think that's another one of those things that, you know, if you're, if you're conservative, or more conservative on the front, and you can always open that up further, but once you're open up, you know, if you're open till 1:00 AM every night, it's harder to pull back. So, I definitely think, you know, So I definitely think, you know, if we're really treating it like a medical, like the medical product that it is, it's probably not fair to think that you can always get your prescription filled by five o'clock because, I mean, I know that I'm, you know, they call me seven times before I can go pick up my prescriptions. So I mean, I think, I think that it, you know, we have to be, think about the people that are going to use it and what would really work, and we know we have shift work in our community, so.
Do we regulate pharmacy hours by municipal code, or is that left up to the individual business or the market to determine when those can be opened or closed?
No, it's up to the market. And I think if there was a market for a 24-hour pharmacy, we'd have one. But I just, you know, I think probably the latest, I think, is maybe, I think, I want to say, I want to say nine, but I could be wrong on that, Mason.
I guess my only, and I appreciate where Todd's coming from, my only concern is from a market standpoint, if we're treating this as a medical use, why would we treat this differently from a ordinance standpoint than other medical establishments? You know, you can abuse other, you can abuse opioids, we see that. So, you know, the abuses of other pharmacies are there, why would we treat a medical establishment differently based on an assumption that it could be abused or we are worried about those symptoms? So that's just one of my concerns.
I've got a thought in response to that, Commissioner Shrum. I took a lot away from our conversation earlier today with the gentleman who sets up and operates these facilities. It's medical, and they refer to their customers as patients, but the reality is it's not the same type of operation like a Walgreens. The security aspect to it is extremely intense, which is why they operate with cameras that are layered so deep that there isn't a place you can stand inside or outside the facility and not have your face exposed to a camera. And the quality of those cameras are so good that you can actually read the numbers on their receipts. The security has to be intense because those facilities are targeted for break-ins. And the light, everything down to the lighting is heavily regulated, or at least by internal policy, they structure them that way because they all have a bullseye on them. It's a place that ne'er-do-wells would like to try to target. And if it's easier to police it by shutting it down at an eight or a nine o'clock hour, I think that's maybe where we ought to start, just until we know what we're dealing with.
And those other states that you're referencing, other places, are they, is that policy set by a legislative body or is that by company policy?
I got the impression that that's a mix. I think it's dependent again on the marketplace, too.
What I would intend to do, I just put the Walgreens hours here because it was just one that came to mind, but what I would do before we crafted the language in the ordinance is have someone on the team take a look at where are all our local pharmacy hours currently, just so we have a good handle on that, and then come up with something very similar that gives some flexibility. And they may not take advantage of all the hours that are available to them either.
From my perspective, I understand where you're coming from, Mason, but I also get that this is a little different than what we've experienced before. So I would like to create a window, you know, whether it's like 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM or 10:00 PM and let them decide what works for them there. So setting limits but not becoming overly dictatorial about what hours they might have.
This may have been disclosed and maybe I missed it somewhere, but are they going to be able to have physicians on site that actually can prescribe? Because I know that there's some facilities that are like that and there are some that strictly just supply dispense.
I don't believe that's in IM-26, and I-
I think it's prohibited by IM-26 at this point.
Okay, I assumed I might have missed that.
Amy, quick question that came up on our call today. So any marijuana sold in South Dakota has to be grown in South Dakota? Is that correct?
I don't remember. I'm sorry. I believe there is an obligation to track, seed to sale, but I don't know if it has to be grown. I think that's the case, but I'd have to confirm that and get back to you guys. I'm sorry.
That's what I heard Yvonne say today, if I understood correctly.
That's what I heard her say, too. That was the first I had heard that. So that's, I didn't bring that to the group because I wanted to look a little bit further into that. I didn't have a chance to talk to Dave Mingo before the end of the day to ask him how good he is at tap dancing, but I would like Dave to talk about some of the dimensional criteria for medical establishments that we're talking about. If not, Dave, I certainly can, but I know that you spent a lot of time thinking about it. Are you able to do that with the commission?
Certainly, not a problem at all. And I say that right when I just closed one screen and lost all my stuff, so hang on. Yeah, so dimensional criteria, land use perspectives, the discussion about zoning and all that, City Manager Leon described it pretty well in the introduction. You know, while we don't maybe necessarily want to go into a wholesale rewrite of zoning code and leaving a series of potentially subjective decision-making processes included in a licensing issue, we do need to reference appropriate locations. So one way to do that is to develop dimensional criteria like we do as City Manager Leon said with dance licenses. We have dimensional criteria for sidewalk cafes. We have dimensional criteria for transient merchants licenses and all of those types of things. So it's nothing new to our staff as far as the process is concerned. What is being proposed is that you start with a base location that references multiple zoning districts that dispensaries would be allowed in. Obviously, they would be restricted to commercial or industrial districts. We wouldn't want, from a land use perspective, anything like that to appear in a residential district. So in the licensing process, we can simply refer to those districts as being appropriate locations. And then further, you would include an overlay that we can easily track now with the technology we have, GIS capabilities that we have. And the original proposal, dimension-wise, and this was pulled from reading a number of sets of code that Mr. Efting has provided us and also doing some research ourselves, and also some of it is as specific as knowing how large lots and blocks are in the city of Yankton. So the initial proposed, proposal for separation would be 1,000 feet from the property line of any school, church, licensed childcare facility, mental health facility, substance abuse treatment facilities, with the exception of that being in the B3 central business district where those, that dimensional requirement would not apply. So in the B3 district, you know, that area from the genesis of community was for business and retail activities and healthcare. And so we don't feel that it would be fair to place that dimensional criteria in that specific zoning district. But in all other locations have that separation, similar to how we do with liquor licenses. Other good advice that we were able to garner from reviewing other ordinances, dispensaries wouldn't be allowed within any building containing dwelling units. That kind of makes sense. When you think about it, you wouldn't want an apartment complex, even if it's located in a commercial district, to have a dispensary on the first floor. Pediatrician's offices, again, harkening back to the childcare facility, hotel motel boarding houses, lodging facilities, 400 feet of another dispensary. So similar to how we have with our type A dance licenses, there's separation requirements. And that's so that you don't end up with a situation, say if we end up with multiple locations, more than two, I mean, you don't end up with a situation where you have a district specific to only that sort of activity. And again, along in those lines, they also wouldn't be allowed to occur with anyone, within any one single development. So you couldn't have two of them in the same facility like a strip mall or a mall, just to try and keep the uses dispersed. That's in large part for security reasons also. Even though that type of business may fit well as an occupant of one of those, you wouldn't necessarily, or experience has taught other states, that you wouldn't necessarily want those types of things to congregate in one specific location just because of the security issues that come along with that. With that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have about spacing issues.
So, excuse me, so Dave, Commissioner, oh. I think she's gonna wait for you, Commissioner Maybaum.
Oh, sure. So I just have a quick question then with the criteria that was included in the packet. So the B3 central business district, which basically our Meridian district would, is largely considered a B3, but like inside that Meridian district, we have a church. And then also, like on the north side of that Meridian district, you're, I guess, butting up against, it'd be like Sacred Heart Church and Sacred Heart School. So is it anything inside the B3 goes? Is that the thought? Even if, even if, you know, just on the other side of the street, there might be, you know, one of these carve-outs, a church, a school, licensed childcare facility, et cetera?
So thought a lot about that, and that's a great question that, you know, leads into the whole B3 district discussion. And that is, when you look at the different mixes of uses in our B3 district, you think about the residential and commercial occupancies next to each other. We even have some heavier commercial, almost industrial types of occupancies in that area. My thought was, and of course, it's a commission decision, but my thought personally was, is that that district wouldn't have that separation criteria because everybody who's located in that district already knows going in that it's a mixed-use development. And it's, there's no exclusivity based on what they or what their neighbors may be doing necessarily. Again, the, you know, it's mixed-use, I guess is the best way to say it. So following along those lines, it is the most hybrid district that we have that allows for all types of occupancies. So for example, if a church decided to move into downtown, they did so with full knowledge that, you know, they were going to be in proximity to heavier and commercial types of occupancies.
I guess my question is kind of related to that. When you talk about all the fancy equipment you have, have you drawn out a map in the city that shows and highlights the areas that would meet kind of what you're proposing? So we'd have an idea?
So we haven't yet. We were kind of waiting for this discussion. That's a great question, too. And we'll be, if, once we get a kind of a dimension idea, that won't be very hard to produce. Technically speaking, it'll be a little time-consuming, so that would be a next step, definitely.
David, I appreciate what the perspective you brought to this, and I think it's the correct one. And even in the B3 district, I can't see this being more disruptive than any other businesses we have down there. So I think that, that works.
And this is not necessarily an exhaustive list of dimensional criteria, but this is kind of what we were starting with, and we'll go back when we craft our ordinance to talk about those things. And we also want to look more into the design criteria, signage criteria. You know, we know we'll, we have design standards that we want to uphold, but, you know, we need to be a little careful on what we set in terms of dimensional criteria for that. But as I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that visually, these are a complement to our business districts in our community and don't deter or take away from the look of any of our neighborhoods or any of the areas of town that they might go. Want to talk, too, with you all a little bit about the licensing fee. Again, Ross is making us make it be reasonable, so this won't, this won't be the moneymaker, which begs the point, what's the moneymaker here? You know, it's medical, so there's not going to be a lot of sales tax there. I mean, it's taxed like a pharmaceutical. However, there are some opportunities, I think, when you look into the fact that more commerce is certainly not a negative thing in any community. We know that there are products that are sold, now we know this, I guess I didn't realize this before, but there are products that are sold, how do I want to say, to administer the cannabis that are sale, that are taxed. And, you know, some even have non-necessarily cannabis products in their facilities, candles or things, or if they have clever, you know, merchandising with their logo or something like that, that do generate sales tax. So we also know there'll be some of that. But of course, property taxes are in nature, something that's, you know, going to be there for us that isn't currently there now because of the facilities don't exist. So there certainly are potential benefits as well, and, you know, there'll be some social impacts, too. However, you know, the licensing fee isn't something that we're going to be able to, you know, say is a profit center for us, nor is it supposed to be. What we're seeing in most communities is they establish a fee and then they have an annual renewal fee. So these, I think, should be, and are set a little higher, quite a bit higher than the alcohol or malt. There's a lot more work into, you know, reviewing this annually. So annually, we won't send each individual through a full background check annually, but Todd and his folks will need to look through their history and look through, you know, the complaints that have been made, if any, and just sort of how things are each year, and make sure everything is up to snuff before we bring a renewal recommendation to you all. So we've seen them, you know, between, for example, Craig, Colorado charges $5,000 for a new license and $4,500 a year to renew the license. Colorado Springs is $2,600 and then a $2,600 annual renewal fee. You know, we were thinking what would be reasonable for our community would be the upfront fee of about $3,500, and I thought of that as being a $2,500 expense for the actual license and then an additional $1,000 for, for the background check to pay administratively for the costs associated with the background check, and then the renewal of $2,500. But nothing's set in stone there, of course. You guys can change that. But to me, that seemed pretty reasonable, given the amount of time we think we will put into these license applications.
This is Commissioner Maybaum. This might be a question then for Ross, though. I'm curious to know if, let's say, a dispensary decides to locate within the Meridian district and let's say a bid district is also formed in that area, would the dispensary be eligible to opt into that? Is there the potential for an additional revenue source with a bid district in mind?
I think there's potential for that. I think we've got a, we need a little help from the legislature, though, to see what we're permitted to do here. I'm really hoping that they have a special session in May and they give us some guidance. And I like to think that as time progresses, we're going to get some of these rights and likely going to get some sales taxes, they're able to work together and get some laws passed. But I don't think we know enough yet. I don't think we can plan on that extra revenue yet, but-
I think the real revenue generator would be the recreational.
Yes.
And there's probably more room there for the potential of, you know, the two cents that we have on sales tax and probably even a third triple B penny. Maybe if the recreational is deemed allowable in our state, there'd be a potential for us to be able to put an additional tax on it locally, if the legislature would allow that. That's where most states are, that are experiencing that. The medical really, you know, there's potential there, of course, but they're really not potential sales tax-wise, which is a little tough because we know we operate on sales tax and these establishments, at least in the setup, or initially might take a little more time of some of our departments that are funded out of the first penny, or first and second penny. But, you know, too, I think over time, that might work itself out as well.
I think the numbers you provided seem very reasonable. I think also- I think also, you know, after we do this for a year or two, we can revisit how much administrative time it's taking and see if it should go up or down at that point.
Yeah, that ordinance can, that can change as part of the ordinance. We also visited with, with the county commissioner, as I said, one of the commissioners with the county, and talked a little bit about where we were headed, just in terms of our philosophies of fee structure and limiting. Of course, we were just speaking with one commissioner, but she seemed to understand where we were coming from and, and that we wanted to make this, you know, make it make sense for us regionally. We will have a little bit of a market in our tourist area, you know, there's a lot of folks coming from a lot of different states, and a lot of different places that don't currently have medical cannabis, and so we have to think about that, and we want to certainly work in partnership with the county on that and be able to share them, with them what we're doing and, and help them along the way, too, but I think there's an understanding that we don't want to be on opposite ends of the spectrum as we approach this, so that we don't create, you know, a cluster right across city limits, for example, of medical cannabis establishments. Couple other points that I want to bring forward for you to talk about is that a lot of the communities that we're looking at and reading about do not allow growing areas for medical marijuana in their corporate limits, so, like farms, so to speak. We think that, we agree, I guess, with them as a staff, that growing areas for medical marijuana in a corporate limit is probably not appropriate. And there are a few exceptions in state law, which Ross might want to talk about, but if, if that's something that you all think we should allow growing areas within city limits, that's another big, another big element that we would probably have, we'd work on a separate ordinance and separate requirements for that, so that would be part of this, but that would be something that would be good to know early on. Ross, do you want to talk about the, is it three-plant situation?
No.
Yeah, I know, but will you?
I'm, I'm actually, you know, more inclined, if we want to allow growing in town, my recommendation is we would limit it to indoor grow facilities that can be heavily secured, but the grow facilities have a penchant for being very stinky, and they can be a nuisance in the neighborhood, you know, we got, some things are just better left to the countryside. In an urban environment, we're all on top of each other, so I, I think I would focus on that, but the rules, as City Manager Leon was alluding to, the, the rules allow for if there isn't available product within our region, I have to kind of pull these out and study them a little closer, but if it's not available, then those who have the, the right or the, the cards essentially can grow up to three plants at their own homes, and there's some requirements as far as where the seeds originate from and things of that nature, but I think we do have an interest in making sure there is a facility nearby where they can acquire it, and that the facility has access to products, so we don't create an environment where people are growing their own product. I think we want to discourage that, but that's kind of a holistic problem as this kind of gets off the ground.
And I know, I know the police department would echo that sentiment of not allowing grow operations, but that's something for the commission just to think about. As we get more information on that, we can even put together separate memorandum, separate information on that. Just swirl that around in your mind as we're going through this, because if that's something that you want to take on, we have to approach things, we have to approach that a little bit differently. We're also aware that we have internal human resources policies associated with medical cannabis, we are looking at those. You know, might have to, I might be asking some of your input or thoughts on that. Likely what I'll do is bring that forward as a change to our personnel manual, and we'll, we'll make sure we incorporate them in the collective bargaining agreement as well, but, you know, I'll probably talk to you about, here's the philosophy where I'm heading, and that's probably not something that we necessarily debate out here, but we haven't dug into that too much yet because we're just trying to focus on licensing, but we are aware that's something that we're going to need to address.
And the issue of growing, I guess the one lens I look at that, because I have no idea what large-scale pot growing looks like, I assume it's big greenhouses, but is there somewhere within the city limits where they would be able to use our water and help us pay for our water plant expansion? That, that's the one lens that, that I look at that issue.
Well, we do have some places in town that are agriculturally zoned, but, you know, as you know, we have limited places that are zoned within our current water service district, so that's something to think about as well, because, you know, we want to make sure that we're careful about development, and making sure that where we do have room to grow or develop in our water district, we're making highest and best use of that. And I'm not here to tell you what that is, that's, you know, why you guys are elected, to tell us what that is, but something to think about. Sounds like there's enough, you know, unknowns that we should do a little more kicking around and researching, and we'll know more as we go along with that as well, but, and we'll do that. I'm not necessarily confident in what all is entailed in that either. I, I feel pretty confident that if it was a really great idea, a lot of cities would be allowing it, but that doesn't necessarily, it's not always necessarily the case, so we'll look into it deeper. We're close to seven there, maybe just we can ask Mr. Efting if he has any final comments or thoughts for us, too, that we haven't talked about that we should look into next time we visit.
I think you've hit most of the key ones. I, I still, I, I think even with the, with the medical marijuana, because I couldn't find it in any of the state statutes so far, because in some places you can get sales tax on medical marijuana, it depends on the state. So that, that's one thing to kind of keep a focus on. I think by starting out with fewer dispensaries and then being able to add them gives Yankton the, the advantage of, of seeing what works, what doesn't work, seeing what, what is happening in the community with it, but I think we're, we're ahead of the ballgame right now, and with the state legislature, you just don't know right now.
Thank you for that, Bill. Any more commission discussion before we wrap up this evening? If not, Al has learned that we have a little more latitude in how we do voting, so we don't necessarily have to do a voice vote to adjourn, so first, if I can get a motion to adjourn.
Benson, so moved.
Shrum, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, say nay. Any abstaining? All right, thank you. This meeting is adjourned, and we will be back shortly for our regular session.